It's your local government at work. Live from City Hall in downtown Warren, this is the Warren City Council Meeting on SalineRiverChronicle.com.
Father God, we ask a special blessing upon the President of the United States, upon Congress, and upon our state legislature halls and our leaders here within the city of Warren and the county of Bradley. We ask that you would come into this city council meeting, that you will lead us, that you will guide us, and that we will make decisions for all of the citizens for whom we represent. We ask that you would give us travel and grace as we return back to our dwelling places. We ask a special blessing upon all the city employees and other elected officials, aldermen, mayor, city clerk, our treasurer, and our city attorney that represent this city. Father God, we thank you, we bless you. We ask all these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
I assure you, we want to remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item Clark called, roll please.
Here.
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 I note that we have a form present. Item four is called approval of the minutes that you've been mailed in your packet.
I move that the minutes are put where it will be approved as mailed.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, corrections, additions? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Madam Clark, you are recognized, present financial statement.
The balance in the general fund on February 28th was $317,897.48. Year-to-date revenue, $382,940.46. The expenditures by department or as follows: administrative, $41,937.73; law enforcement, district court, $18,898.5; municipal building, $5,376.66; recreation, $12,612.41; cultural center, $9,177.58; armory neighborhood center, $1,391.82; other expenses, $19,449.32. Year-to-date expenditures, $367,437.12, and that's an increase of $15,503.45. The balance in the street fund on February 28th was $201,301.49. Year-to-date revenue, $48,928.45; year-to-date expenditures, $55,105.17, and that's a year-to-date decrease of $6,176.66. The balance in the other accounts was $189,29,920.48. Year-to-date revenue, $606,407.56; transfers out, $606,948.67, and that's a decrease for the year of $541.17. You should also hold a press report in front of you.
Motion is in order to approve the financial statement.
We have that we approve the financial statement, second.
Motion is second to approve the financial statement. Motion, Henderson, second, by four. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor of approving financial statement, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Madam Clark, you are recognized.
Okay, in our city sales and use tax, we received $61,685.9 in February. Year-to-date total is $120,845.87, and that's down about $1,000 from the same time period last year. We received in county sales and use tax, $41,603.97. Year-to-date total, $82,436.6, and we're down almost $1,000 now, so. You should have a copy of the district court clerk's report for joining the way.
Any questions or discussion? All of them are recognized. No one's, we have one person that signed the end of speech. Hugh, if you'd come up. This is Hugh Connor that owns Moore's Stuff.
Thank you. Good left. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Hugh Connor. Hugh? I'm here to talk to y'all about these open-air vendors we got around town.
What kind of vendors?
Open-air vendors. I just heard a lady here talk about sales tax income down about $1,000. Those people don't pay any sales tax. I do. Every business in town here, if they got, you know, a building and everything, they got a previous license, we pay sales tax. We collect it. These people don't. You see them sitting up there in the Fresno parking lot, over at Valero. I stopped and talked to that boy at Valero. They don't even have a sales tax number with the state. So they don't pay sales tax, they don't collect it or anything else. Well, you know, times are hard, the cities are all looking for money coming in and everything. You know, the city's got bills too. We got the police department, we've got the fire department, sanitation, streets, you know, that's money that's walking out the door, not only for me, but for the city itself. I mean, it's every week. Somebody sitting up somewhere around town here selling stuff, that's money out my pocket as a businessman, plus it's out of the city's pocket, the sales tax, previous license money, all that. You know, I like for the city to pass an ordinance to where it's against city ordinance, where they're not able to do that anymore. I'm not against anybody having a yard sale. Charge them a $5 permit fee. That's sales tax money that the city don't collect, money out my pocket, but that's as part of it, people's gonna have yard sales. So let the people, you know, pay a $5 permit. If they have a yard sale this week, they pay $5. If they have one next weekend, pay another $5. All it does is make it for the sales tax money that the city's losing. That's something, you know, I've talked to the mayor about last year, and, you know, it's time to do something. I mean, some time's coming up, and there's gonna be a ton of money walking out the door that y'all gonna lose. I mean, I'm gonna lose it too, because it's my sales also, but the city's gonna lose it also. So, I appreciate y'all taking the time, let me talk to y'all about it, it's something y'all think about.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next item on the agenda is under Mayor's Report, and it's the Big City EDC Report. You have that in your packet. And you have the income statement from the sales tax count. And item B is now called, and that is ordinance to rezone what we call the Potlatch Staff House. And B, they have appeared before the Planning Commission, and we have Robert Gray here tonight with Potlatch Corporation, if you have any questions. All parties have been notified of the hearing tonight, that the ordinance will be brought on the agenda, and it's ordinance number 875. And it's the same thing that we rezoned the old Potlatch Woodlands office. And what it is, is a rezone from heavy industrial to commercial. And it actually protects the neighborhood, because right now they could put a log yard on it if they so desired, but this makes it a more salable entity, and they have a prospect to sell the Potlatch Staff House to. And if the council has any questions for me, I'm gonna hunt and make Robert answer. So, the ordinance 875.
I move that we place ordinance number 875 on its first reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second to place ordinance 875 on its first reading. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor of placing ordinance 875 on its first reading, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Ordinance 875 is on its first reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 220 for other purposes whereby, excuse me, whereas by ordinance number 220, the city of Warren, Arkansas adopted the zoning regulations for the city of Warren, Arkansas, the zoning regulations prepared for Warren Planning Commission by City Planning Division, University of Arkansas, Federal Arkansas, dated May 1964, and adopted by the Warren Commission, Planning Commission, on the 11th day of May 1964. And whereas Warren Planning Commission is certified with the City Council of Warren, Arkansas, it said ordinance should be amended to classify the property in the city of Warren, Arkansas, herein after described from M2 to C1, in order to sell said real estate. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Warren, Arkansas, Section 1, that ordinance number 220 of the city of Warren, Arkansas, including but not limited to all maps and descriptions of zoning districts B, and the same hereby is, amended to classify all that property in the city of Warren, Arkansas, described in attachment A to this ordinance, and incorporated herein, and sent forth word for word in this ordinance from M2 to C1, in order to sell said real property. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication. Attachment A to ordinance 875 to be rezoned from M2 to C1. A tract of land lying in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 6 Township 13 South, Rings 9 West, be more particularly described as, commencing at the northwest corner of Lot 3 of Block 2 of the Southern Addition of the city of Warren, Arkansas, running dense south 29.95 feet to the south right-of-way of Pine Street for a point of beginning, dense north 82 degrees 57 minutes and 1 second east along the said south right-of-way 16.42 feet, then south 168.37 feet to the south line of said Lot 3, dense west 16.3 feet to the west line of Lot 3, dense north along the west line of said Lot 3, a distance of 166.36 feet to the point of beginning containing .06 acres more or less, and a tract of land lying in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 6 Township 13 South, Rings 9 West, be more particularly described as, commencing at the northwest corner of Lot 3 of Block 2 of the Southern Addition to the city of Warren, Arkansas, running dense south 29.95 feet to the south right-of-way of Pine Street, dense north 82 degrees 57 minutes and 1 second east along the said right-of-way, south right-of-way, a distance of 16.42 feet to the point of beginning, dense continuing north 82 degrees 57 minutes 1 second east along the said south right-of-way, I lost my place, 21.49 feet, dense north 87 degrees 38 minutes and 8 seconds east along the said south right-of-way 72.45 feet, dense north 89 degrees 29 minutes 45 seconds east along the said south right-of-way 76.46 feet, then south 87 degrees 38 minutes 30 seconds east along the said south right-of-way 88.31 feet to the east line of Lot 2, the Block 2 of said Southern Addition, then south 0 degrees 6 minutes 39 seconds, west 195.63 feet to the southeast corner of said Lot 2, then south 89 minutes, excuse me, 89 degrees 2 minutes 23 seconds, west 124.85 feet to the southwest corner of said Lot 2, dense north along the east line of said Lot 3, a distance of 13 feet, dense north 89 degrees 31 minutes 9 seconds, west 117.5 feet, dense north 12.7 feet, dense west 15.7 feet, then north 168.37 feet to the point of beginning containing 1.13 acres more or less. That's the D ordinance 875.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 875 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and place ordinance 875 on its second reading. All of them, excuse me, any discussion? All of them in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Ordinance 875 is on its second reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 220 for other purposes.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 875 on its third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place ordinance 875 on its third and final reading. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Ordinance 875, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 220 and for other purposes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 875.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 875. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. There's no emergency clause, so the ordinance is adopted. All right, Robert, thank you. The next item of business will be ordinance 876. With concerns abandoning an alley on the Presbyterian Church property, I now declare a public hearing for purposes of discussion of anyone interested in making a statement on the abandonment of an alley on First Presbyterian Church property from Jolly Street to the Newton property located the south side of Presbyterian Church, all land of which the alley is resting on First Presbyterian Church of Warren property. Anyone here to discuss that issue? Here none, I declare the meeting closed, and it's ordinance 876.
I move that we place ordinance number 876 on its first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place ordinance 876 on its first reading. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. This one won't be as hard as that last. An ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 876, an ordinance to abandon a portion of an alley located on Lot 3 and north of Block 2 on Turner's map of the city of Warren and for other purposes. Whereas a petition was duly filed with city clerk of the city of Warren, Arkansas, asking the city to vacate and abandon all that portion of the street set out in said petition, and whereas after due notice as required by law, the city council has, at the time and place mentioned in the notice, heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question, and has ascertained that the alley or portion thereof herein described has herefore been dedicated to public use of an alley. Hearing described has not actually been used by the public generally for a period of at least five years subsequent to the filing of the plat containing said alley. That all owners of the property abutting upon the portion of the alley to be vacated have filed with the city council their written consent to the abandonment or have had an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing, and that the public interest and welfare will not be adversely affected by the abandonment of the alley. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Warren, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city of Warren, Arkansas releases, vacates, and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally, in and to the alley described as follows to wit. That portion of the alley between what is currently designated Jolly Street west to the Newton property, found in the northwest quarter of Turner's map of the city of Warren, Arkansas, map 5-13-9, more particularly described as Lot 3 north of Block 2, lots 1 through 6. That a copy of the ordinance due to certify of the city clerk shall be filed in the office of the recorder of the county and recorded in the deed records of Bradley County. This ordinance shall be full force and effect from and after its passage and publication.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 876 on its second reading.
Second.
Is a motion and a second to place ordinance 876 on its second reading. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Ordinance 876, an ordinance to abandon a portion of an alley located on Lot 3 and north of Block 2 on Turner's map of the city of Warren and for other purposes.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 876 on its third and final reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to place ordinance 876 on its third and final reading. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. Five, four, none against. Ordinance 876, an ordinance to abandon a portion of the alley located on Lot 3 and north of Block 2 of Turner's map of the city of Warren and for other purposes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 876.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance 876. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. All right. Everyone's aware that's to help the hospital, we all know what's going on there. In your, next in your packet is a resolution to utilize state aid units, part of the state aid program. The state aid committee met and looked at 25 projects. They approved 11 of them. You see 11. The Warren project is called Job CO6001, Warren West Pine Street Overlay. It's an overlay of West Pine Street from Etheridge Street at the railroad track to the county park at the Warren city limits. And that will be Resolution 573, and I will read it at this time, Resolution 573. A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Warren, Arkansas, to utilize state aid street runners for the following city projects, Job CO6001, Warren West Pine Street Overlay, selected section S. Whereas the city of Warren understands that state aid street program funds are available for certain city projects to the following participating ratios. Reconstruction and resourcing preliminary engineering, preliminary engineering, the state aid's 100%. Construction of city projects right-of-way, state aid is zero, city pays 100%. Utilities, state aid zero, city pays 100%. Construction, state aid pays 100%. Construction engineering, state aid pays 100%. City projects programmed within this, the city would pay 100%. A city program, city projects programmed but not let to contract. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Warren, Arkansas, that, Section 1, the city will participate in accordance with its designated responsibilities in this project. The mayor is authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of this city project. The city agrees upon completion of this project to assume the maintenance of the right-of-way by city forces and/or others, including utilities and individuals, in accordance with prevailing Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department regulations. The city pleases its full support, and hereby authorizes Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department to initiate action to implement this project. If you'll notice in the newspaper article, I didn't catch it till I read it the second time, that they, I thought it wouldn't go out for bid to July, but they're saying they're gonna go out to bid in April.
I move that we approve Resolution number 573.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 573. Any discussion?
I would just like for our news media that's here to grant the resolution as is, because there is some confusion with some of our citizens thinking that this was extra money that could be done for any street, and this is actually designated.
Okay.
Because the state is actually responsible for that.
Exactly.
The city, the state is, does all the construction work. In this case, the city won't be out of any money. This is all a state aid project.
But when it was read in the newspaper, it wasn't really clear to some of the constituents, and they would like for their streets to be.
Oh, we have crime needs all over Warren, but this is a one, this money was appropriated by the state aid committee to several cities for particular streets in those towns.
And that's why I ask that we ensure that our news media that's here get a clear, clean copy of what it's actually stating.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All of them in favor, accept it, $190,000 from the state of Arkansas, raise your hand. Five, four, none against. Commission reappointments, as you're aware, have the housing authority nominates.
The reappointments.
From within, they reappoint Alma Brunson for a five-year term.
I move that she be reappointed per question at the agenda meeting. She is in regular attendance.
And I second the motion.
Motion and a second to appoint Alma Brunson to a five-year term on the housing commission. All of them in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. I'd like to recommend Bill Watson. He's been on the Parks and Rec for quite some time, and he is one of my regular attenders for that meeting, and really enjoys the work.
I move to reappoint her, Bill Watson.
Second.
And he's agreed to serve. Motion and a second to appoint Bill Watson to a five-year term on Parks and Rec. All of them in favor, raise your hand. Five, four, none against.
And who is our chair of Parks and Rec?
He is incapacitated at this time.
Is he still the chair?
Yes. That's something that your mayor's got to tend to. So I would say we would chair less under Police Chief Monthly Report, and I'll try to get something resolved on that, Alderman Henderson, before the next meeting, so we get that put aside. Alderman, excuse me, Alderman, let's see, Police Chief Randy Peake. Give his monthly report. Any questions or, Chief, you wanna talk about what's going on?
As you can see on my report, that we have, we had a civil service meeting on February 20th, and two candidates were approved for hire, Mr. Kevin Black and Mr. Michael Key. Michael Key is already working as a dispatcher at the time he was approved for hire as a police officer, and he will be moved into that spot in the near future. Mr. Black went to work on March 4th as a patrolman, and we have one other slot, and we should be finishing it. That background within the next, we lack a psychological evaluation on this individual, and I'm pretty sure if the civil service approves this person, we will have all three of those slots filled finally.
That's wonderful.
So.
Congratulations.
Still going and trying to keep everything going in the direction of these. Any questions? Police Committee?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me.
Also Seth Jolly was promoted from dispatcher to the animal control officer.
Yes, ma'am.
And the police committee has not met, but as you see included in the chief's written report, Seth Jolly has been already promoted and has already gone to work in that capacity. As chairman of the police committee, I move that the step increase in pay which goes with this promotion be effective as of February 18th, 2013, the day he took on his new duties.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, and that pay is going from $931 to $956. There's four B to two F. You have a motion and a second to give Seth, since he's been promoted, give him that pay increase. Any discussion? Here none, all of them, in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Anything else, all of them? Oh, excuse me, enjoy that.
Don't worry about it. If she was finished, it goes right into the, okay, well, I had several complaints from some of the wheelchair, whatever you call them, owners from Twin Rivers, of being attacked by dogs on the corner of Jolly and Rock Street, up and down Rock at their, getting right there at their clean lot, Tony Cathy cleans off regularly, all the way back down toward maybe Glover Street. It's about 10, 15, right in that area, and they're multiplying as we speak, because some of them ain't eat. And they've been attacking kids and any kind of little motorized vehicle that come up and down the street.
And this is Jolly. And this is.
This is on Rock Street.
Rock and, yeah, right there, the corner of Rock. Yeah, you can go by there and see them, they've been laying out there about, uh, eighteen of them.
We, we picked up, and this is a problem with, with all the town, but, uh, he has picked up a number of dogs, uh, back at Pam, I think run over. But nevertheless, I will get that information to him and we'll put some, uh, extra, uh, attention on that area.
Yeah, some of them turn, his puppies and you get them now, they won't be able to. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, chief, uh, how are you? Y'all have his monthly report. Alderman Reek, you're recognized.
Do have one item here and this is, uh, concerning the, uh, International Association of Arson Investigators. We normally send, uh, Howard and Don Hollsworth and Chuck, Chuck Weir. And, uh, I'm make a motion that we, uh, that we send them to this, I believe it's semi-annual training, did they do this? That we send those three individuals to the training.
Make the motion. Can we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. I see five, four, none against. Anything else, Alderman Reek?
That's all I have.
I just like the report to the council, we're losing one of our firefighters, one of our paid firefighters, he's, uh, heading out to Montesville, so. We are gonna be shopping for a new guy. That's valid.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman Reek?
No, that's all I have.
Sanitation manager Mike May. Y'all have the monthly report. All the motions recognized.
Yes, mayor, uh, the, uh, sanitation committee met, uh, back on February twenty-sixth in the afternoon. The, uh, main topic of the main thing on the agenda was an increase in our, uh, garbage, uh, pickup rates. Okay. Five items that the committee reviewed concerning this rate increase. One reason, you have a sheet that shows the deficit in the sanitation department for twelve was twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Now, I wanna give you one reason that was there. Between, uh, end of eleven and end of twelve, we lost two hundred and thirty-nine water meters. From people just moving out or whatever the reason. Well, that revenue would come up to, uh, roughly thirty-four thousand dollars a year that we lost revenue. Now, uh, another item, uh, uh, we have this contract with the people that, uh, transport our garbage away from here. That includes a dollar a ton a year, so that's gonna increase our cost three thousand dollars, uh, this year. We have, uh, we're going to have to put a, uh, well, it's a, at the transfer station, it's called water runoff removal and Mike, uh, that's what I'm standing, we have to put like a roof over a compaction area so that doesn't rain into the compaction area and have runoff water from that. That's gonna cost approximately twelve thousand. Now, there's another item that I want Mike to explain on here, the solid waste district annual assessment, thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Mike, if you would explain to the council what that.
Bradley County, City of Warren, uh, are both members of solid waste district and they have assessed a dollar fee per ton on everybody in South Arkansas, basically. So, uh, that's gonna be a fee that's mandated that we, there's, you know, there's nothing that we can do about it, so it's gonna happen this year and next year, um, so.
Is it recurring every year?
Yes, ma'am, recurring fee.
And that's, uh, thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, that's new.
That's new.
Or thirteen new expenses. That we didn't have in twelve and in the past. And the other, uh, reason for the increase, sometime over in the year, we're gonna need to buy a new truck. And I understand it's the one that does the dogsters.
It's gonna be a patch truck, it's a commercial truck.
Commercial truck, okay.
Truck runs six days a week, uh, and, uh, it's got quite a few miles on it, it's getting, uh, getting uncomfortable to drive with the amount of slack and different things in it, so.
We don't have a daughter, I'm out here, but that isn't expensive. It's just about that, gonna happen this year. Uh, so the bottom line is, uh, with these, uh, new fees, uh, the increase in our, getting our stuff pulled away, this runoff removal workout at the, uh, compaction station, losing the water meters and at some point a truck. Committee met back on February twenty-sixth, now I said that. And after discussing these issues on a motion by Alderman Burks, executive by Alderman Henderson, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the grade increase to the, to the council for their approval. Now, in Alderman Burke's motion, his motion was to make this increase in three steps. A dollar in April, it would be now, a dollar in October and a dollar in January. So that the impact of this, you know, bind-up three-dollar increase is not quite as bad, even though it's not good. So, with that said, I would make a motion that we, the council, approve our garbage rate, uh, increase.
It's a committee motion, requires no second, so the floor is open for discussion.
Okay, a dollar now, a dollar when?
Uh, well, it was fixed at a dollar in April, it said in March, but we, too far along, but April, October and January was the motion. So it makes the three-dollar increase totally effective in January of fourteenth.
Any discussion? Here none, y'all have heard the motion. Ready to vote? All those in favor of the committee's recommendation, raise your hand. I see four, four, those against, one against. All right, motion carries. Anything else, Mr.?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. No, let's, excuse me, we got building codes. You have the monthly report, any questions for Mike and the building code?
Mayor, can we just point out the fact that the city fee is still under the total cost for the, uh, for the county and that we're continuing with full services? Um, no services would be, uh, cut as it relates, uh, the services in place.
We still pick up twice a week and we're still, there's no fees charged for picking up furniture and all that stuff anymore. And we pick up limbs at no charge, except from commercial vendors.
It wouldn't like.
So no, that's changed.
Sure they pick that up as well.
I'd like the news media to like ours, see them on that. All right, anything else, Mike? All right, thank you, sir.
Good job, uh, Mr. Chairperson.
Let's see, street born and Tommy Adams.
I have full ideas about that, I'll talk to you.
Your share, okay, thank you.
Nice share of gold.
Y'all see Tommy Adams in front of me, he is the street born.
Yeah, we packed several streets this week to, done a lot ditch cleaning and we had a problem at the old land, they always spend about close to a week out there trying to drain several thousands of gallons of water that had collected back down in there and we're about to kill a bunch of them or plus it was on part of an old land, they old and we had to, we'll out fix that problem, but we got it, had it all under control.
Any questions? I do see one, Alderman Henderson's recognized.
Uh, yes, um, I had contact with Mr. Clyde Temple, uh, after reading the article in the newspaper, he was wanting, uh, seven heels added to the street committee list and I did let him know that I would share that information at this meeting.
Okay.
And Helen, would you please let the chairperson, Mr. Burks, know this as well? Thank you.
I just like to ask Tommy, when, when y'all are over on East Pine, and I don't know if this needs to be done at the same time, but where they had to dig into the street there at Mr. Rose Green's house, if you have the sort of equipment, have to build it, that ditch from about Mr. Green's driveway around the corner from Bradley in front of the, uh, house that's, that's on the corner. And then there's, there's a little covert there and the water also comes from the, toward Dion's lot, goes under the street. What I'm saying is, that's, that little stretch of ditch there is, is, uh, it's not flooding the street, but it's.
We took that old big concrete block down that ditch and cleaned a little there last week.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
No, I remember the concrete block, that's part of the sidewalk that the truck was.
Yeah, that was blocking a lot, that was blocking a lot of the water.
Yeah, I could, I'm sure. I just noticed it's grown up and it, you know, it flowed around there good. When it's clean, it flows around there good and gets a long way down.
That water, I don't, I think it breaks and comes back, uh, towards, uh, Myrtle Street, right, right up there somewhere.
It's on up about, it's on where the town crest may go down to, to Myrtle, but it's that other little.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Anything else, Alderman?
Yeah, on that route right there going out to West Pine, it's been overlaid several times before. If we overlay it again, there gonna be certain.
Several times before.
I'm talking about when we overlay, back this side I'm talking about, on Pine.
Well, we're not, uh, uh, this will be just the second overlay from, uh, Etheridge, yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about is you, so you understand I just get off of Pine. Remember on the east side of the hospital, where we overlaid and we got so high on the overlay that the water went going up over the curb and into the neighbor's yard down there?
Yeah, you have a lot of that around, uh, Turner Street, that way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we gonna get into a spot like that on Pine?
No, no, not on Pine Street.
Okay.
Uh, this is just your, uh, your second overlay. And if you've ever went out West Pine after a big rain, right there just past the entrance to, to the Southern Court, it's dangerous. That, the, the road is still fairly good right there as far as not being balking and broke up and all. But ever since they overlaid that or built that road, they left some roots in there and that water will get about six inches deep after rain and it'll take a steering wheel away from you when it hits it. Well, what we gonna do if whenever we do that overlay, we'll put a two-inch overlay in there and that'll build all that up and put that water going back to your trap inlet, so here. And get that water off of the street the way it's supposed to be. And then on out, out there, it's, uh, just, uh, one of those deals where in a, in the future, we gonna have to do something. And so now is the best time in the world while somebody else is gonna pay for it. And so I, 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 I think, I think that thing works great. Too easy is all they're putting on there, this will be just a second overlay, it's not gonna be nothing like, plus we haven't got curbs and gutters on out there.
Okay.
So it's not gonna affect you on that.
Okay, and you know, sometimes I know, I notice on the overlay, you know, the tax, they, for instance, when they get rid of, like, they'll take that little ground and grind it all the way back down.
Talking high dollar.
I'm agreeing, I'm just talking about the problems that could cause with those log trucks going through there and running it back up again.
Well, no, I don't think you're gonna have that on there.
Okay.
Uh, I don't believe you have a better problem right in there. But I know what you're talking about too on the bill, huh?
Hmm.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. The chairman is not here to report on the public street hearing and would either member care to report on that or we can save that for next week, next month? All right, we'll save that report for the next time. Community and economic development.
None of this time.
Ways and means?
No business.
No business. Plan and commission, you have the minutes in your packet. The aviation committee met, you have those minutes. Water and sewer, you have those minutes. Parks and Rec, we have, uh, we took bids on, uh.
Oh, I have, I have a question about the airport committee.
Ah, okay.
What about the design and construction of runway extension, is that just, did the committee decide to put that on hold?
Uh, they're putting that on hold because they feel like they need to expand, uh, property on the, they call it airport sometimes, and you've flown into it, but it's a dark hole at night.
Absolutely.
And they're expanding, they're gonna go west with property purchase and try to expand the perimeter and also go north.
So they're gonna spend the money on the property first, then.
And then do runway extension later. Okay, let's move on, uh, housing, let's see what was, uh, Parks and Rec. Let me see if I can find that. You have the bids in your, uh, packet and, uh, Collin Hammond had a bid bond, Master Technical had a bid bond, Thunderbird Electric had no bid bond. You see the bids, uh, Collin Hammond Electric was twenty-seven thousand seven five one, Master Technician and Mechanics across it, twenty-six thousand three eighty-one, Thunderbird Electric, twenty-five thousand eight hundred.
I move that we take the bid that met the specifications of our specs that were advertised.
The low bid that met the specs.
Lowest bid that met the specs advertisement.
That would be Master Technician and Mechanicals, twenty-six thousand three eighty-one.
And I would second that motion.
And they did have a bid bond, that is correct.
That is correct. Just go. Uh, with, where are these lights? I mean, didn't we put some along one of the walk, but these are on the sidewalk too.
These are replacing the bothers, you know, I'm talking about the short lights.
Oh, okay.
The ones that the kids.
Yeah, yeah. There's about five of them missing and the rest are, you can't find replacement parts above and they've outlived their usefulness.
Well, these are, these are, this is not, more lights along, more sidewalks, these are just replacing where these.
They are on the sidewalk.
I know, but they are, they're replacing the little ones, if kids or, or somebody decided to.
Destroy.
Take apart.
And these, these can't be destroyed if you've looked at, they're, they'll match what's on the new addition.
Right, that's on a pole type.
Yes.
Okay.
Sixteen-foot pole, I can't remember all the specs.
I didn't know if it was additional lights on part of the sidewalk, it had never been lights, but I understand it's replacement or the others and I'm.
And bulbs were not very good, I mean, even when they were first put down, the lights went out and they were not very, I don't know what kind of material they were built out of, but they were just not, not very good.
Oh, yeah, the problem was the lighting.
And we didn't have a warranty on them, right?
Well, they've been too long, Alderman.
Who else did that previous workforce on those lights?
Thunderbird.
Thunderbird.
Who's gonna be doing the maintenance on the lights when we need maintenance on it?
Thunderbird.
Well, would there be any, any kind of forensic value having the person that did the previous work and is gonna be continued doing the work, do this work right here?
As my husband, who built a lot of jobs for the highway department, says, if you don't meet the specifications, your bid is not considered.
In fact, it should not have been accepted if it did not meet the specs.
I just asked the question. I'm like, just, with that. I just asked the question, you know, just, with that electrical stuff, is, when somebody puts something in, you have to do a lot of tracing, going backwards and forwards, and then you, somebody used a different method than another somebody else, so I just asked.
How can, how can you submit your bid if you don't meet the specifications of the bid?
That's not.
I mean, why put out the specs if you're asking for something in particular, and then someone submitted it and not meet the specs of the bid?
What I want to mention is not to do with the bid, and I understand what y'all are saying. But to answer one question about who's gonna do the maintenance, if it's approved to accept this master technician, technician mechanic's bid, do they have some kind of warranty with these lights that they would do for some point in time, the maintenance on them?
I believe warranties, I believe required a one-year. I'll have to go pull them and see.
Bid specs.
Well, that, that probably just be parts only, it won't be labor.
Well, that's what I say, one little warranty, does it include parts later for how long, and, you know, for how long? That would take care of it for a year, but then I understand what Joel's saying about someone.
I'll put that.
We have a motion and a second, no votes, any call? Have you got the second? Okay, second was Ms. Fulton, is that right? Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor of the motion to accept a master technician mechanical bid, twenty-six thousand, three eighty-one, raise your hand.
Who met the specifications of the bid.
Four, those against, one against. Motion carries. We have a ballgame tonight. Housing Authority, you got the minutes of the meeting, Tofu Center, you have that report. Any unfinished business?
Oh, good, yes, I do, I'm sorry. I got roped into a meeting, I apologize, for the hospital health curfew, I mean, health expo, whatever you wanna call it. And they had an increasing number of patrons that came last year that was kind of concerned about the kids getting away, so there's so many activities out in the street. And for safety reasons, they want to block off Bragg, I think it is, from the railroad track, right there on the north side, so they can control the traffic coming from the south side off of two seventy-eight business.
Uh, when is that?
That would be March, April the sixth. It's on Saturday. And wouldn't affect anything this side of the railroad track, but the health complex.
Y'all was thinking they closed that last year.
No, they didn't.
No, it was, it was open last year.
So the motion is to close Bragg Street on April sixth for the hospital, what's it called?
Health Expo.
Hospital Health Expo, then.
Not the health.
Why they wanted to close it, Joel?
Second, right there on the railroad track.
I'm motion, you can't second.
I'm sorry, my bad.
I'll, I'll second.
Second, though. Now we can discuss it.
Too many questions going in here.
Now we can discuss it.
There, there are kids out there that, you know, play on the various type of equipment that come in, so I agree that might be a safety mechanism for them.
And they do cross the street to their facility on the east side.
Over on the other side.
Food also, and the parking.
So we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. See, five, four, and then.
And it ends early, so, so it wouldn't be on.
It shouldn't affect anybody. I think it starts at eight, but then come out, just start coming, six, you have state police coming in, bringing their equipment, and then they got that little smoking house, and some damn hell of a cop. Yeah, it'll be open by twelve.
Under new business item twelve, the Arkansas Economic Development Commission is having a training session with the city of Warren in conjunction with Donna LaHomme and the Chamber of Commerce. And it's because of increased interest in Warren, in our spec building and other property, we're, we're going under an extensive training effort to learn how to sell or train to sell industrial sites, and it's gonna be called site visit training. And it'll just better prepare the site, the contact committee, the existing contact committee for selling these properties when we have a prospect other than a telephone call that actually wants to see the property. We're working with a guy named Kevin Sexton with AEDC. And I think it's a good program, and Mr. Tofu will be involved, and I'll be involved, and you'll make the next meeting. And Donna, and David King, and several others in the community, Mike is helping us with some of the zoning. Steve Rand on the city staff is helping with some of the water issues, and I think it's a good thing for our city to be prepared.
And I'd like to sit in for continued education hours to keep my certification.
Yeah, come on.
I might like to come to some of it, too.
All right, Mr. Tofu.
Yes, I, I guess put the task of local media, along with that training, there's some kind of way we can get the word out to the people that always out in the community complaining about how bad the community is, for a chance to try to talk about how good the community is because they don't know who they're saying it to. You know, a lot of times we run down our own self, and people won't even have an opportunity to come see us, but just listen to other people, they think we the worst hole in the United States. And sometimes I don't think the, the public realize the harm that they also do talking about the things that we have to offer.
Exactly right.
Thank you, sir. Announcements, Dorothy Henderson is recognized for announcements.
Everyone should have the twenty thirteen Job Fair flyer, it's going to be Thursday, April the twenty-fifth, from ten until two-thirty at the Menel Baptist Church, and we ask that you help get the word out. Right now, we have twenty vendors that have signed up. Our goal is to have at least thirty, as we did last year, and I believe we will meet or exceed our goal. Anything you can do to give some PR? We will need people volunteering to help with the setup and the takedown, and meals for the lunch, et cetera. So if you want to sign up, you have my cell number, my contact information, contact me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fulton, we need a motion to pay the bill.
I am.
Mr. Mosley Sexton. I'm sorry, Puff, I. All those in favor of paying the bills, raise your hand. Notice that it's unanimous. Hallelujah. The meeting is set for the Monday date, we need a motion adjourned. All those in favor of saying?
You can go hire y'all's super attendants. Oh, yeah, everybody is playing, we're gonna get out, man.